Good evening. I call to order the regular meeting of the Sholo Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, January 26, 2021. Roll call shows that all commissioners are present. One of our commissioners is present by phone is that is Commissioner Bess. We'll start with an invocation, which will be done by Commissioner Josh Adams, and then the Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Chair Hefner. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
Our father and he were thankful for the opportunity we have to gather here this day as members of our community to represent, um, to represent the citizens of our, 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 um, our community. We're very grateful for the moisture that has fallen on our lands and we're also very grateful for the opportunity we have to travel here safely and to be able to arrive without any harm. We ask that as we go about our business today, that we might be able to have thy spirit with us and then we might be able to do the things that would be beneficial and pleasing to our community, those that we represent. We're very grateful for all that we have. We're thankful for members of our community and we say things in just Christ amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no old business on the agenda this evening, so we'll move on to new business. We have two items of new business. Uh, the first of those items is the election of officers. This is something we do at the uh, first meeting of every year where we uh, call for nominations for the president and, I'm sorry, the chair and the vice chair. Um, so I will go ahead and open up nominations for the position of chair for this upcoming calendar year. Vice Chair Hefner.
I nominate Bishop for chair.
We have a nomination, uh, second. We have two nominations. Do we have any other nominations? We have two nominations for me. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Are there any others? Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the nominations. I do accept the nomination, but we need, I think, have a second just to approve the nominations. Are we good with that?
That was.
Your second. So we have a second, um, by Commissioner Roberts. Any, uh, discussions or discussion for nominations?
You certainly can, or you can just call for the vote. You just have one nomination, so.
We'll go ahead and call for the vote then for the position of chair uh, for Commissioner Bishop. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Seeing none. And now we'll open up nominations for position of vice chair. Do we have any nominations? Commissioner Adams.
Uh, nominate Commissioner Hefner.
I have a nomination for Commissioner Hefner for vice chair. Do we have any other nominations?
A second.
I have a second for the nomination. Okay, see no others. I'll go ahead and close, uh, the nominations. Those in favor as Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Hefner is served as vice chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? That passes unanimously, so we're good to go. All right, our next item of new business is a consideration of conditional use permit 602-04-235 submitted by Shane Shumway to allow for a building exceeding forty-five feet in height and restaurants serving alcoholic beverages on property located at 1501 East Wolford Road, that being APN 210-32-016LNN. Ms. Fekel Carter.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Shane Shumway of TLS Hospitality LLC has submitted a conditional use permit or CUP application requesting constructed building exceeding forty-five feet in height with a restaurant serving alcohol at 1501 East Wolford Road, that being APN 210-32-016LNN. The subject property is zone C2, which is general commercial, and buildings exceeding forty-five feet in height and restaurants serving alcohol both require a conditional use permit in the C2 zoning district. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Wolford Road and White Mountain Roads and adjacent to the Hampton Inn. A conditional use permit was granted in September of 2005 to the Hampton Inn to allow for the construction height exceeding the maximum building height. Maximum building height in effect in 2005 was thirty-five feet. Building height of the Hampton Inn is approximately forty-six feet three inches above finished floor elevation. City code currently allows for buildings in the C2 zoning district to be forty-five feet in height with additional height increases allowed through a conditional use permit. Similar conditional use permits for height allowances were previously granted to Navah Apache Medical Center in 2005 for an eighty-five foot building, and in 2011 for a proposed La Quinta Hotel, which was not constructed. That approval was for approximately fifty feet in height. According to the submitted conceptual plans, the applicant requesting to construct a new building adjacent to the Hampton Inn. The proposed height is fifty-three feet above finished floor. The elevation of the road in the intersection of Wolford and White Mountain Roads is approximately six thousand three hundred seventy-four feet. The elevation of the subject property is approximately six thousand three hundred sixty-six feet along the west property line adjacent to the same intersection for a difference of eight feet. No user has been determined for the proposed restaurant. City Council approval for any new liquor license is required. Findings of fact, Shane Shumway of TLS Hospitality LLC has submitted a CUP to allow for a building exceeding forty-five feet in height and a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages located at 1501 East Wolford Road, that being APN 210-32-016LNN. The subject property is zone C2. Buildings exceeding forty-five feet in height and restaurants serving alcohol both require a conditional use permit in the C2 zone. Based on the submitted conceptual building elevations, the applicant is requesting construct a four-stallary building with a maximum height of fifty-three height above finished floor elevation. The subject property lies approximately eight feet below the elevation of the road in the intersection of Wolford and White Mountain Roads and slopes down gradually to the east. The site plan has been submitted as a part of this application. The site plan is conceptual in nature and is subject to change. No user has been selected for the restaurant at this time. The subject property is part of a larger area that was included in a development agreement between the city and the property owners. This development agreement outlined responsibilities for the development of the area, including roadway improvements, landscaping, and building design. The current surrounding, current zoning of the surrounding properties includes to the north, south, east, and west, C2 general commercial. The current land uses of the surrounding properties include to the north, the Meadow, to the south, National Bank of Arizona, to the east, Hampton Inn, and to the west Speedway Convenience Store for an auto sales miles I center. Transmittal memos were sent to all affected agencies and no applicable comments were received. No public comment has been received regarding the proposed development. Staff recommendations after reviewing the zoning ordinance, standards for review, findings of fact, discussions with the applicant, and because the request is consistent with the City of Sholo general plan, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve conditional use permit 602-04-235 submitted by Shane Shumway of TLS Hospitality LLC to allow for a building exceeding forty-five feet in height and a restaurant serving alcohol located at 1501 East Deuce of Clubs, that being 210-32-016LNN to the, subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements, including applicable conditions of the existing development agreement. Two, all light shall be fully shielded from adjacent properties and right-of-ways. Freestanding lighting shall not exceed the height of the existing freestanding light poles in the Hampton Inn parking lot. A reciprocal ingress egress parking agreement between the Hampton Inn and the subject property shall be recorded. And four, this conditional use permit is for the approval requested building height and restaurant only. Only. All other approvals, including building permit, drainage, signage, parking, and building design will be contingent upon compliance with the existing codes and will be reviewed at the time of a formal building permit to middle. Staff as well as the applicant is available for questions.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioners, uh, the director's gonna inform us that we have a presentation from the applicant that we'll, uh, do before we open up to the commission for questions.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have a request from the applicant to be able to present some information at this time. Also, um, I'd like to point out that we did receive a letter from an adjacent property owner this afternoon. That letter has been provided to, uh, members of the commission for review. Uh, I'll just read the last paragraph of that letter. Uh, this is from Joshua Hall. He says, "To be clear, I am pro-growth and support the efforts of the Shumway Group. I am even willing to agree to the eight-foot height variance, even though it appears my buildings upon the condition that developers are willing to make the hotel design more complimentary to the mountain theme already set forth throughout the business center." So, um, that's, uh, the letter that we received from the adjacent property owner. He unfortunately was not able to be present, uh, this evening, so. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back to the commission.
Did we have any other presentations or is it just this one?
Uh, we do have the applicant that would like to present some information at this point.
Uh, would the applicant please come forward? And if you would, uh, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners. My name's Shane Shumway. I live at, uh, 380 East Iris Lane in Intop. And, um, excited to be here with you this evening. I am grateful for each of you for being here as well after digging out for an hour of snow at my house, uh, this morning. I'm actually surprised that we're here, but I'm very grateful that you guys would take the time, uh, to be here this evening. Um, I wanted to just give a bit of background of, uh, who we are, our company, and then just talk about the amenities that would be involved in this project to give you more information about what those amenities are. Uh, I work for a company called Whiting Brothers Investment Company. We've been doing business here in the White Mountains for uh, five generations, including here in Sholo. We started with my great-grandfather, who was a dry farmer in Concho. That turned out to be a terrible business idea, so, uh, we ended up getting into the sawmill business down the road and eventually that morphed into the hotel business. We kinda roll with the punches and whatever works, that's what we try to do. Uh, we've, uh, built and operated several businesses here in Sholo. Uh, my father Douglas, who is here as well, he built the Holiday Inn Express here in town. Uh, my grandfather, uh, also built another hotel, uh, here in town, and, uh, we currently operate, uh, the Hampton. Uh, I wanted to maybe describe a bit more of the amenities that are involved in this project. Uh, if you have the site plan, uh, that might be helpful to kind of look at while I'm, uh, describing them. So what we're, uh, proposing to build is, uh, a Marriott product. It's a dual-brand hotel that combines two brands, uh, the Town Place Suites brand and the Fairfield brand. Uh, the Town Place Suites brand is an extended stay brand. Uh, and so it caters to individuals who are looking to stay in town for a longer period of time. It includes kitchens in each room, allows you to cook your own meal if you want to stay in there. Uh, it also includes, uh, close to three thousand square feet of conference space and a restaurant that we hope to lease, uh, to a third party. On that north end, uh, of the building, we hope to, that's where the restaurant will be located. And, um, one of the things we hope to do with that space is to create some really good indoor/outdoor space, a fire pit, some grass area, and, uh, the reason for that is, that's just a sign of kind of great space. We think people would really love just kind of being in that space. Currently at the Hampton, we have individuals who come in and they go and they grab an apple, uh, from the lobby and they take it out and they feed the horses there in the pasture, and they just love it. And so we've, we think that this is just, you know, another opportunity for community members to come down to the Meadow and enjoy this space, right? So that individuals who, you know, it's not just for individuals who are driving by or may have homes that are built and overlook the creek. Instead, community members can come down and enjoy this space as well. Um, I wanted to just kind of highlight a couple of goals from the general plan of Sholo and why this development helps further those goals. So the general plan provides that tourism expansion helps increase municipal revenues and that public gathering areas with visual excitement will strengthen Sholo's identity as a commercial, entertainment, and cultural hub of the White Mountains. The objectives and goals of the general plan include, one, promoting economic development and tourism; second, attracting a variety of restaurants; third, encouraging major service industries to locate in the area; four, fostering statewide meetings and conferences; five, promoting infill projects that are close to existing infrastructure; and six, expanding attractive and successful business enterprises. I think this development helps further all of those goals. Um, finally, I just wanted to kind of mention or anticipate certain feedback that we, we tend to receive in, in these types of, of meetings. Um, first, I'd like you all to know that we're, we do our best to try to implement the direction that's given by, uh, the commission, and obviously we'll continue to try to do that. There is some feedback that can be concerning, that is, feedback that says, "Well, we don't like development here," or "We don't like this type of development." And sometimes that feedback is very difficult because, um, it, it doesn't take into account the effects that that can have down the road. And so if there is feedback like that, I'm happy to provide more perspective on, on why I don't think that feedback would apply here. Um, the other type of feedback is, you know, individuals who don't like the design of the building. This is a, our first take at the design. Uh, I really like the design elements of this hotel and this restaurant and this project. I think it fits well. I think it looks really good. Um, that's not to say I won't try to take any feedback that's given and implement it and, and as long as it's consistent with, um, you know, Sholo code requirements. Uh, so I'm happy to, to hear that and respond to that if there are questions. Um, but I've also learned that when it comes to design, there's multiple factors that have to be met. One is, you know, listening to what the city wants and needs. Second is Marriott has design guidance that, um, you know, they want their, their brands to feel and look a certain way. So that's another factor. And then the third is just constructability, right? As an individual who is trying to create, uh, the funds to, to build the building, uh, you know, we always need that ability to not push it over the edge of no longer, uh, being constructible. So, uh, with that, um, again, thank you for your time. If there are questions, uh, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Shumway. From the commission, are there any questions for staff?
Just one and just want to make sure that I fully understand everything. So the real reason why we're here for the, um, conditional use permit is the heights requirement? That's, that's the main purpose, is that correct? If I wanted to summarize everything, is that pretty much right?
There are two items before the commission tonight, both combined into one agenda item, uh, because they deal with the same property. Uh, the first is a restaurant that serves alcohol. Uh, that requires a conditional use permit regardless of building height or size. If it's in the C2 zone, you gotta get a conditional use permit to sell alcohol at a restaurant. Uh, the second is any building over forty-five feet in height also requires a conditional use permit through the Planning and Zoning Commission. So you guys are here for two items, um, both dealing with this specific property and this specific project.
Okay. And then just as a second point to that, and we've made exceptions on the height requirement in the past, yeah, case in point, the examples listed by staff, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, just making sure I understand. Thank you.
Be clear, yeah, just to be clear, if it was one story less and didn't have a restaurant with alcohol, you'd just build it.
Yeah, if it was forty-five foot zero, uh, it would not require a conditional use permit because it would meet the requirements. Um, if there was no restaurant serving alcohol, no conditional use permit would be required, uh, because it would meet the requirement. So we're here for those two items, the height and the restaurant.
Commissioner Roberts.
Um, the city council will have to further approve the restaurant serving alcohol.
So with any liquor license, the city council has to make a recommendation to the state liquor board. Um, so as the restaurant comes in, uh, as a user is determined and as they come in and, and file for a liquor license, that will have to go to the city council. It'll, property will be posted and all the, the different steps. Uh, they then would, in their regular meeting, make a decision and make a recommendation to the state liquor board, uh, whether or not alcohol should be approved at that location.
Are there any other questions? Uh, yes, Commissioner Barlow.
Uh, is there anything in the existing development agreement about height of buildings or restaurants that serve alcohol?
So, um, the existing development agreement itself, um, there is some things about development standards. Um, here's what it says, "All development shall be reviewed by the city prior to issuance of a building permit. The standards for review shall be those in effect at the time of submittal of the building permit application." So, um, when they submit their building permit application, we look at things like parking. We look at things like landscaping. We're gonna look at the building design. Um, this is part of that process of bringing the plans into compliance with those standards in effect. The standards that are in effect today say if you want to go higher than forty-five, Planning and Zoning Commission has to say it's okay. So that is an allowance that is provided in city code.
Thank you. And that's. Roberts.
There's an eight-foot drop between the elevation of what, White Mountain Boulevard?
White Mountain Road.
And White Mountain Roads.
Yes.
And the footage of this, the base of this building?
So, um, I'm gonna go to the aerial for the second. Um, we referenced the intersection of White Mountain Road and Wolford Road when we, uh, highlighted what the elevation is. We did that on purpose because that's a very definite location. Uh, when you say the intersection of White Mountain Road and Wolford, everybody knows where that is. If we said the north property line, for example, people might not have a very good reference as to where that exactly is in relation to this property. So the, uh, elevation there in the center of that intersection is eight feet higher than what this property line is along, uh, that intersection boundary. So here, to the, what would be the southwest corner of the property is approximately eight-foot difference.
So the net result is basically that the top of that building, if you had it set at street level, it would be higher by eight feet than what it is with this exception that we're granting. But because we're, because, but because of that eight-foot drop, the exception we're granting pretty much offsets that building height exception.
It, it's essentially an eight-foot difference between the, uh, the, the ground level and the road level, which is essentially the difference between the maximum allowed height and the requested height.
Are there any other questions for staff?
Can I just make one more point real quick, which is, um, the current zoning of forty-five feet, we could create the same density and, and building type in, within that current zone. But the reason we're asking for the variance is, um, that would change the parapet line of the building and expose uh, mechanical equipment on the roof. And, which we could do under current zoning, but we feel it better to screen that with the parapet of the building as opposed to allowing it visible from, from the roof.
So the top eight feet of the buildings just facade?
Yeah, it, it, it basically screens, it, it creates a better-looking building so that you're not, um, you're screening that, that top portion so that you're not looking at the, uh, mechanical systems of the building. Which if you look at the, like, for example, the, the new hospital wing, right, that it's exposed, and so what you see on top is the mechanical system. And what, what this does is it.
This building looks very similar to the hospital to me in the way of the design.
Yeah, there's some newer buildings in Sholo consistent with this design, like the new Starbucks building, um, has similar elements, uh, the new hospital, like you say, as well.
Are there any other questions for staff, or do we have questions for the applicant? Vice Chair, did you have a question?
So the, are the, you said three thousand square feet of conference center. Is that, so the first floor is a restaurant. Is it the second, third floor?
No, so, uh, adjacent to the restaurant is on that first floor, there's just conference space adjacent to that.
Okay. And then the second and third floor there, that's?
Uh, hotel rooms, and then we need some additional space for us.
Okay, so there's our office.
So the second, second floor is some office space for us. Third floor on that side is hotel.
And then it's external swimming pool?
Yes, it is. Yeah, which, uh, there's a strong debate in our company about whether or not that's a good idea. We'll see. They have them in Flagstaff.
I thought that was an interesting design choice, that's all.
Shane, you had said that, um, that north corner where the fire pits at?
Yes.
You were welcoming the public to come to that area?
So, yes, I mean, it's a restaurant, and I think any restaurant operator wants individuals there. And so individuals that are there at a conference or there at a restaurant or just want to hang out, uh, come hang out at the patio and enjoy, you know, great space, and we're gonna do kind of grassy area and landscape it and the fire pit and everything, so.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, sorry, I'm gonna be the king of obvious questions, but I just wanna make sure I fully understand the fact. Did I hear you say that you, um, you're a part-owner of the Hampton Inn just in the same plaza?
That's right.
Okay, perfect. That's all I wanted to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions from the commission, uh, are there, uh, we'll open up for the public to comment. Are there any members of the public who'd like to ask questions or comment on this item? You would please come forward. Some of you are pros at this and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Rick Ferno, 1331 East Meadow View Place, uh, here in Sholo. Uh, first, I want to welcome the new commissioners, Gentry Hatch and Zach Barlow. Thanks, uh, for your contribution. I know you're brave. Uh, second, I want to thank the Shumways for their, uh, faith and investment in Sholo. I think that's gonna be a, a great project. I'm really looking forward to it. Uh, hopefully it's not pizza or Mexican food. And also you mentioned, uh, it took you two hours or an hour to shovel out the pesto, so I want to know how you did that. Uh, great snow, uh, this last night. Um, my question actually is for the P&amp;Z director. Uh, when the Hampton Inn originally went in, I remember that their, their parking lot lights were out of compliance. Did those eventually come into compliance, or were we granted a, a waiver for that, if I remember correctly?
Right, so, um, what Mr. Ferno is referring to, the original condition of approval for the Hampton Inn was that the light poles would not exceed fifteen feet in height. Um, they got installed higher than that, and they did come back to the commission and got a, I guess, an allowance because of the lights, uh, that they used and the type of shielding that they used, uh, that those lights were okay, uh, but no lights were to be any higher than that. And so that's why you see the staff recommendation that they not exceed the height of what the Hampton Inn lights are.
Okay, and they'll, they'll pretty much comply with the dark skies ordinance.
Fully shielded. We have discussed with the applicant, citywide, we're starting to see these LED lights become more and more prevalent, and they bring their own, uh, set of challenges as far as shielding goes. Uh, we've recommended that these lights just be fully shielded. That way, um, we don't have to worry about spillage and things like that that seem to accompany these new LED light fixtures.
Okay. Thank you. I'm looking forward to the project, and I think it's gonna be a great, um, a great addition to Sholo, uh, and the White Mountain community. So once again, I want to thank the Shumways for what they're doing. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission, uh, for discussion or action. Commissioner Roberts?
One more thing for staff.
Sure.
I realize that this was a last-minute letter that was received by staff, and I don't know that you've had any opportunity to discuss with the applicant whether we can satisfy any of his concerns or not. So I guess maybe I should have asked the applicant if they think that, I realize that the Hilton has certain design standards that they want to have so that all of their buildings look similar.
Thanks for the question. I did talk with Mr. Hall yesterday, and he expressed the same concerns to me in our telephone call that he put in that letter. And we're, this is our, I like the design of the hotel, Josh wants some modifications, and what we said is we'll continue to work through these items. I think at the, the bottom line for us is we want to meet the Sholo city code requirements. We want a building that looks really good. I mean, that's really important to us, and we also just need a building that we can construct as well. And so what we said, you know, taking all of those factors is, you know, let's continue to work together, and we'll continue to listen to him and try to implement his feedback as, as much as we can, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, if I could just add to that, we did have an opportunity to speak with Shane today regarding that, this letter and the conversation that he'd had before. We feel, I think, between, between us and with him, that there's a commitment to look at that and to, you know, within practical matters, to address those concerns. I would point out that the development agreement has some wording along those same lines that construction needs to meet, what's the word? Cultural view towards outdoor living, color and design shall reflect the mountain environment. I mean, so there's, there's some words there, but they don't get real specific as to what that actually means. So we'll, we'll work with the applicant on that. If the commission felt so inclined, they could certainly add a condition that says staff and the applicant shall work together, but I think we've established that. So from a staff perspective, we'll continue to work with them, whether that condition is placed on there or not.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hefner?
I'll make a motion, and I move to approve CUP 602 04235 submitted by Shane Shumway to allow for building exceeding 45 feet in height in a restaurant serving alcoholic, alcoholic beverages located at 1501 East Wolford Road, that being APN 210-32-016L and, and subject to staff recommendation.
A motion by Vice Chair Hefner, do we have a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion on this item from the commission? Hearing and seeing none, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Those in favor of approving the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? It looks like that passes unanimously. Thank you, Commission, thank you to members of the public and to the applicant for being here today with us to discuss that item.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add, with any conditional use permit, there is a seven-day appeal period. If no appeal is received by the city clerk within seven days, this conditional use permit will be considered effective. Thank you.
Thank you. And that takes us to our next item of business, which is call to the public. Is there any member or any citizen here to speak with the commission for call to the public? Seeing none, I'll refrain from going through this boilerplate, and that takes us to item eight, which is approval of the minutes from our last meeting back on October 27. Those are included in our preparation packet. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Vice Chair Hefner. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented to us, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, we have Commissioner Best as an aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I wasn't here, so.
Sure, we have an abstention by Commissioner Barlow. Otherwise, that motion passes. And that brings us to item nine, which is summary of current events. We'll start with the commission members and Commissioner Adams.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the city employees and the county employees that are out there plowing the roads, trying to keep us safe for the rest of us. Certainly appreciate their efforts. I know that they've missed some sleep the past couple of nights, but, you know, we're going to be able to go to work and our kid's going to go to school because of all their hard work, so very appreciative of them.
Thank you. Commissioner Barlow?
Yeah, just to echo that, enjoying being able to have some snow, but again, thanks to the city for all the work that they're doing to be able to get us out and about here tonight and, and around the town, so thanks for their effort.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
I would like to add to that, and I would also like to ask that in these difficult times that we're facing right now with the COVID, and in driving in this difficult weather that everybody try to be considerate of everyone else and drive safely and try to be safe with their social distancing.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatch?
Glad to be here, thank you.
Commissioner Best on the phone, do you have anything for summary of current events?
Yes, Chairman, thank you very much, just everybody be safe and mask up.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hefner?
I too like to echo the sentiments about the city staff and their hard work and county as well. Want to, I work with Summit on communications, I want to just communicate to people that they're doing their best in regards to vaccinations. The system they have to interface to get the vaccination there isn't theirs, so it's state-set, so please be patient and kind with everyone locally because it's not of their making. So that, it is a difficult thing, and it's, it's not the way that they would have set it up, if they would have set it up, so just be aware of that. And just remind everybody, when you're driving out in snowstorms, your headlights may seem like they're on because these new dashes light up, turn your headlights on because it also turns on your taillights and people can see you. That's it.
Thank you, and I'd like to just welcome our two new commissioners formally, Commissioners Barlow and Commissioners Hatch, welcome to the commission. It's nice that the city council was able to get us staff appropriately since they were part of the reason why we had some vacancies. Very thankful to them, and that's all I have. Director Kraskis?
Thank you, Chair, just a few things. First of all, I'd like to thank our Public Works crew for the work that they've put, put in. A lot of people don't recognize or realize they work overnight when these storms are hit. They don't get to go to bed when the rest of us get to go to bed and they're out working all night and into the day, so appreciate them. If your road hasn't been plowed yet, or it's been plowed but maybe needs another run, be patient. We've got a lot of roads and a lot of people that need to be plowed, we'll get to it. Secondly, along those lines, waste management is running a little bit slow because of this storm. We've got a two-day delay on waste management, so if your normal pickup day is Wednesday, it'll come on Friday. So, and everybody will be picked up by Saturday. So if you're thinking you need to hustle your can over the berm, you've got a couple days to let it go. Also, I'd like to thank my son for digging out my driveway so I could be here at the meeting tonight. Along those lines, also, Sholo schools have announced that there's a two-hour delay tomorrow, so they are holding in-person school just two hours later than normal. And I think that really, that sums up what I have. So thank you to our new commissioners, thank you to our current commissioners, we appreciate having all of you here. Thank you.
Thank you for being here with us tonight, either in person or at home watching on City4TV. We've concluded all of our business and we are adjourned, thank you.